Lord, order the August 3rd meeting of the Morris Town City Council. And welcome those who are here with us this evening. We begin with the indication followed by the pledge like our council may.
May he have you pleased. Do you have any thoughts? We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, Lord. But first I'd like to ask you to put a hinge of protection around our students and teachers as they go back to school, Lord. From accidents, COVID, any other calamity that might arise, Lord, we just ask that you put your hand in. Lord, we ask you for wisdom and guidance as we deliberate about these issues here before the city council. Lord, we love you and we thank you for your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, let's check in. We are set in person. We have the minutes of the July 20th meeting for you if there are any corrections that must be approved. This is ready. Motion center, flag, sitting in all the favors, Aye, motion carries. We open the floor for citizen comments. If you have want to address the council about items that are on the agenda, this is for agenda items on them. There's an opportunity later in the agenda for other topics. If you come, please identify yourself and voting at line with your name, your address, and the floor is now open. You have three minutes. See, no one come up to close this portion of the meeting?
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Is that man you're talking about?
No. You have an agenda item?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move to the public hearing portion. We have one public hearing, uh, actually four public hearings today. The first is ordinance number 3689.101, to speak the ordinance to amend the ordinance 3689 to city of Morris Town annual fiscal year budget of 21-22 to appropriate additional funds totaling $70,962 to appropriate funds to the police department that were received from the sale of confiscated weapons and reappropriate those funds for two trucks for the Parks and Recreation Department. The floor is now open for anyone that wishes to be heard on this item. See, no one come forward. We'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion and this be adopted. So, motion, Smith. And we need a second. Have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next, public hearing is on ordinance 3691. This is entitled the ordinance to amend the code of the city appendix B. This is resorting to a portion of Hamlin County with tax parcel ID number you see before you. This from R2 medium density residential district to light industrial. The general location being shown on the exhibit which is included in the packet. This is that Buffalo Trail just past the former Panther Steel Company. This was an item, as you recall, the council voted to deny at its meeting two weeks ago. Uh, the if anyone wishes to be heard on this item, the public hearing is now open. See, no one come forward. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to deny this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion, Petticoat. Do we have a second? And I'm suspecting we do have a second.
Second, I second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing done, let's vote. And motion to deny is approved. The next is ordinance 3692. This is entitled ordinance to amend the code of the city appendix B, also the rezoning of Hamlin County Tennessee tax. The parcel ID number is before you. This from heavy industrial to high density residential or R3. The general location being shown on the attached map exhibited on Dearing Road. If there's anyone who wishes to be heard, the floor is now open.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is a request from Mr. Tim Walther, his own parcel look at 5080 Dearing Road from HI to R3, as you just noted. Uh, this parcel is slightly under an acre in size and currently contains a single family house. The adjoining property that surrounds it on this side of Dearing Road was recently rezoned by this board from HI to R3 also. And if this rezoning is approved, the applicant has stated that this parcel will be included as part of a single family residential subdivision they are seeking to develop. Rezoning this parcel to R3 to be included in this development is consistent with the previous rezoning decision and most of the properties along this road and to the north contain residential units. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item?
This property is located across from the Lincoln Church.
It's across from the Living Promise Church. Okay, yes, sir.
See, no one come forward. We'll close the public hearing portion. And I'll entertain a motion, this ordinance be adopted. Motion, dibs. And we have a second. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing done, let's vote. And finally, we have ordinance 3693 entitled an ordinance to close the vacay certain rights away within the city of Morris Town, College Wood Drive, public right of way. The general location being shown in the attached exhibit A. Uh, the public hearing is now open if anyone wishes to be heard on this matter.
So, staff has received a request, as you just noted, to abandon the public right of way at College Wood Drive. This request was from the owners of College Wood Apartments. This closure will be from the northern portion of Johar Road Public Right Of Way to the eastern public right of way of Pritchard Drive. This road was constructed to serve the apartments located at this been, you know, in this in this area, and it currently only serves properties owned by College Wood Apartments Incorporated. And approximately half of this right of way is an undeveloped grass strip. Staff recommends approval of this abandonment request, and Atlantic Mission did vote support this request at their previous meeting.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance. So, motion, dibs. We have a second. Any questions or comments from the council?
So, any further improvements on that road or maintenance is to the under, to the maintenance of that?
Yes.
And this is coming off of Johar.
This there.
Anyone else comments? We ready to vote? Let's vote. And that ordinance carries and is closed as the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have one item to introduce on first reading and to set a public hearing, that being ordinance 3689.2. This is an ordinance to amend ordinance 3689. It's the city of Morris Town's annual budget for fiscal year 21-22 and to appropriate nominations made from Wiggles to the fire department, $1,500, and the police department, $1,500.
As you indicated, this is to recognize grant funds provided by Wiggles. They did best with the ribbon cutting for the new facility on the west end. Very generous of Wiggles. We'd like to recognize the revenue and recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation? Motion, Ahearn. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries and is set for a public hearing on August 17th. We have eight items to award of bids and contracts. The first is which is the approval for the fire department to apply for the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant for an amount of $23,567 to be used for the purchase of handheld thermal imaging camera and charging stations. There is no local match required.
It's our policy to come to council and seek approval prior to making grant applications. That's the intent of this action. We feel like we have a good application, would certainly be useful, would recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation? Motion, Smith. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval for Parks and Recreation Department to apply for the Walmart local grant for an amount of $1,000 to be used for holiday outdoor lighting displays. There is no local match required.
Again, it is our policy to seek your approval prior to making grant applications. As indicated, this is Parks and Rec's attempt to find some funding for some holiday decorations.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendations? Motion, Ahearn. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of purchase order 2200283 to Cummins Crosspoint LLC for repairs on fire truck engine 467. This is in the estimated amount of $44,585.32.
We've had a significant amount of problems with this particular engine. Uh, this recommended approach is to simply replace the diesel engine in the, uh, in the truck to allow us to get some additional useful life and get it out of the shop room on such a frequent basis. We feel like it is a good investment and would recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation?
Mental approval.
Motion, Senator. We have a second. Any questions or comments?
When did we purchase this vehicle?
The 13, 15, sorry, 2015.
And it says it'll have a warranty now?
A new warranty on the engine.
150,000 miles?
Yes, or 12.
Five years.
Five years.
How many miles it's on it at this time?
Thirty-two, 32,000.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? Hearing done, we're ready to vote. Let's vote. And that motion is approved. Next is the approval of purchase order 2200280 to 10-8 Video LLC for purchase of in-car video systems and replacement batteries from the Morris Town Police Department in the amount $10,465. 10-8 Video LLC is the manufacturer and sole source provider of this system.
This is a budgeted item and is part of the normal rotation of equipment as we try and keep things current and not allow things to get too old. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation?
May for approval.
Motion, Senator. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion is approved. Next is the approval of purchase order 2200282 to Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. for the purchase of jaws of life rescue equipment for the Morris Town Fire Department in the amount of $29,858 via Sourcewell, contract number 040220.
Council will recall in our last meeting, we approved the purchase of a rescue pumper. This would be equipment for that new engine that will be put in service. It is a budgeted item, we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation? Motion, dibs. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions on this one? Hearing done.
How many jaws of life do we have?
We presently have two. Uh, one is the new hydraulic which runs off a battery. Then we have an old style which runs off a compressor. The hydraulics have about 10,000 pounds force to them compared to the old compressor that just has 5,000 pounds torque.
Any other questions? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of purchase order 2200281 to Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. for purchase of gas masks, filters for the Morris Town Police Department in the amount $11,520 via Sourcewell, contract number 032620.
This again is replacement of consumable materials. It is a budgeted item, recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation?
May for approval.
Motion, Senator. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that's approved. Next, the approval of purchase order 2200284 to Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. for the purchase of air packs for the Morris Town Fire Department in the amount of $42,831 via Sourcewell, contract number 032620.
As you can tell, we're, we're trying to go through and do our routine update of equipment on an annual basis that we have provided for in the budget. This is again, replacement of a budgeted item, just to keep our stocking in good shape. It was through rotation, we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation? Motion, dibs. We have a second. And we do have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. And the item that is not approval of the purchase order 220028 whatever, the approval of the inspection and maintenance agreement between the city of Morris Town and real estate holdco LLC for the property described as Honda of Morris Town.
Council's familiar that we have these agreements with developers that outline the responsibilities of the developer and the city in maintenance of ongoing maintenance of stormwater provisions for the newly developed property. Honda of Morris Town has expanded, therefore they've made some adjustments, and we feel very comfortable with this, would recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept their recommendation? So, motion, Petticoat. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any questions? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries as well. That concludes this portion of the agenda. Council, we have one appointment to make today to the Morris Town Regional Airport Commission. Uh, this is a council nomination and vote. Uh, this is for a five-year term, currently filled by Paul Lovell, who was put on there by his council to serve an unexpired term of a previous commission member. Mr. Lovell has said he would agree to continue serving for a full term. Is there a nomination from the floor?
I'd nominate Mr. Paul Lovell to reappoint.
Motion to reappoint Lovell. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion or any additional nominees? Hearing done, let's vote. And Paul Lovell goes back on, and we appreciate his willingness to serve on the airport commission. We have two new items, uh, issues before us. One is the confirmation of a disciplinary action of the Morris Town Police Department, Chief O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mayor. I messaged for confirmation of an employment action that you are aware of, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any, sir.
Are there any questions from the chief? Is there a motion to confirm this disciplinary action? Motion, dibs. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing done, let's vote.
Could I inquire which, which it is? Which issue it is?
Let's vote, let's vote. We had a, uh, actually the time to talk about agenda items was early in the agenda. That has passed. We have another time where you can address the council in about as soon as we get through the city administration.
I'm here on behalf of James Cruey. I don't know if this is the one you're voting on or not.
It is. As it was an agenda item, you're, we're, there already passed a portion of comments you would have had about that.
I like, I apologize. I thought maybe when you called it up, there would be discussion about this. I didn't.
There was discussion in the, in the pre-council agenda meeting, which is public size, as being held. There is a portion for you to speak here in just a few moments if you wish, I'll get to you. The next item, uh, thank you, Chief. We have also a confirmation of disciplinary action against Morris, in the Morris Town Fire Department, Chief Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm requesting confirmation of disciplinary action taken against one of my employees. It is an infraction of the department's attendance policy.
Is there a motion to accept Chief Taylor's recommendation? Motion, dibs. We have a second. And we do have a second. Any questions or comments from the chief about this item? Hearing done, let's vote. That motion carries, thank you, Chief. We come to the city administrator's report, Tony.
A few things to bring to the floor tonight. First, our COVID active cases are increasing at alarming rate. We know that vaccines are available. We ask that the community help keep our community working by taking appropriate actions to, uh, to make sure we don't continue the spread of this virus that has slowed us down in the past year and threats to do so in the future if we don't take appropriate action. I wanted to report on, uh, two projects, uh, street improvement projects on West AJ. One is being managed by the city, the other by the state. They're both about halfway done, so by the time we get, uh, get these projects done by mid-October or so, we will have, uh, essentially new pavement from the county line all the way up West AJ to Crescent Center, and I think we're going to see significant improvements. The work we've seen already is ma- making a significant stride forward. Also, in terms of our street projects, Bright's Pike Bridge is now being closed for repair. We do have a detour that will move, move you around that area if necessary. Our target completion date for Bright's Pike Bridge is November. We reported at your last meeting about our local paving projects. We anticipate that they will start here in the late summer, early fall, and as well was reported by Public Works, we hope we complete before Thanksgiving. So, a lot is going on with regard to our streets network and bridges. And I want to remind council that we do have a scheduled workshop following this meeting where our recreation department will talk about an opportunity for a grant application that can bring a new facility to our park system, and I urge everyone to hang around for that if they can. That's my report for today.
Mayor, I have a question. Tony, are you talking about Crescent Center to Walters Drive? I think Larry, what we were talking about before, is the Crescent Center to a portion where we stopped? Are we not going to close in that?
The, the state, there's a bit of a fuzzy line. We're still working out between, uh, where the local street stops there at the intersection and TDOT's responsibility. We're still trying to get that done, but we'll, we'll hopefully get that resolved. I don't know at this point in time that it, been fully resolved, we're working on that.
When we say Crescent Center, are we talking about where the Crescent Center property adjoins, is something like this McFarlane?
It's basically, we're making improvements to the S curve there. It was the, the most significant benchmark, but we're also, we have a, a current purchase order to extend from that moving to the east to where we stopped the previous paving project, which I think is about Mars Street. So, we will be continuous paving along that side. It's two different projects, but it won't look like it if you're driving down the road.
I just wondered because we had not discussed, we only discussed Crescent too, so.
Right, but it's because it's two funding sources that the state STP program is taking care of the West AJ Crescent Center. Local money is paid, paid to resurface from there to lead up at Mars.
But that's not in our paving project that we approved?
No, that was, that was last year it didn't get done because of the delay with the, the one that we're working on now.
Thank you.
Did we not discuss from time going from county line to Cumberland?
And that, that will, if you remember, we picked up from Mars and went to Cumberland, uh, what was that, a year and a half, two years ago?
Two, two years ago.
So, so in essence, within two years, we will renew that, that entire distance.
That probably won't happen on this project.
Well, if, if we won't resurface the part we did two years ago, we will come up right to the edge of where it was, which is where Mars is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does that conclude your report?
That's all I have.
Uh, we have a committee report today. Our, this was the day our finance committee met. Vice Mayor Petticoat chairs that committee. Do you have a report for us?
Yes, uh, we had our, um, meeting today at 3:30, and, uh, we, uh, talked about the local option sales tax, um, got some good reports on the sales tax, and also our bond ratings remained at the spot that it was before, so it looks like we're doing a pretty good job with that. I appreciate the members being there, and I think it was a very positive meeting. That's my report.
We now open the floor for comments on any particular topic and, and, uh, Councilor Burks, I, again, sorry for the, maybe I didn't make it real clear at the start that it was on agenda items, uh, but you have the floor for, for three minutes to address the council.
I apologize. I, I guess different councils do it differently, so that I accept my follow on it. My name is Chuck Burks. I'm attorney in Knoxville, Tennessee with Justice Nolan Burks. I'm here on behalf of James Cruey. Mr. Cruey was a police officer here, Morris Town Police Department. He graduated here in high school with honors. He went into the armed services, served in Afghanistan, was honorably discharged when his vehicle was hit by the IED and caused some, some severe injury in terms of brain injury and so forth that he was over, able to overcome. He went back to Walter State, got a certificate in law enforcement, and then got, went to post, got certified, applied for a job with Morris Town Police Department back in 2012, 11-12. He passed his, uh, fitness for duty exam and his, no, fitness for duty exam. And according to the, uh, reports, uh, he, he did very well throughout his work there since 2011, 12. In 2020, he started experiencing some issues with some medication, uh, and we don't take any issue that he was experiencing some problems and some confusion and so forth. He is treated at the VA hospital as a veteran. Finally, Dr. Shaw, S-H-A-H, his psychiatrist, adjusted his medications and took one off, and he's been doing well. He was sent to a Dr. Michael, Malcolm Speckham, who, uh, did some testing and then recommended that he had further test in his report. Uh, he indicates that it may be the medication causing this confusion area, and he was off on administrative leave during this time. He later went to the VA hospital and was seen by Dr. Rodney Sullivan, who has, has a PhD as well, and he did a test and said basically, uh, he can function fine and normal things, but he said this test, this cognitive test is not one to determine fitness for duty. So, then we got into the question of, of having him tested again. They wanted him to go to Nashville, Tennessee, that they being the city. Uh, we talked to Dr. Williams, who was his family doctor. Dr. Williams recommended that he go talk to the VA, and so VA, and I don't know if you're experienced, but it takes a long time to get a lot of medical care for VA and a lot of times. And so finally, Dr. Shaw got approval, and he took the second test, uh, the cognitive test that Dr. Sullivan performed, and he took it on June the 20th and finished it, uh, took it on, and then finished it July the 20th, actually the day you're supposed to have it, so.
Ms. Burks, uh, because your time's expired, and I, I, we're in the confines of the structure of the agenda, is there something you're asking this council to do?
Yes, yes, I am. And, and I wanted to, uh...
In a brief two or three sentences or less.
Yes. In preference, Dr. Sullivan says that there is no mental defects in him. He has, he's got PTSD, I mean, he's got post-traumatic stress disorder from this IED. I'm asking you not to approve his termination, giving him an opportunity to go back to the police department. And I think that, that he's been a valuable member of this police department, and by their own records, he's, he's really been a good officer, he's worked hard, but he does have, he does have PTSD, uh, post-traumatic stress disorder, and that he has medications for that, has been treated. So, I'm asking y'all to, to not...
Thank you for that, and just because this was discussed in great detail in our, in our pre-agenda meeting, uh, it, the recommendation from the chief who had reached a different conclusion than what, what you're asking, and that was what the council upheld, I guess any, uh, any actions beyond that, probably in the confines of council that's confirmed the decision of the chief.
decision of the chief on particular action that he recommended. So.
Well, that's what I wanted. And I, again, I didn't realize you had a pre-meeting on it. I was told that we had five o'clock, so I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Name and address, please.
My name's Steve Conway. I live in the last town that over you all, in the next up here on Bell Road. I've got just a question. I don't know if you all are aware of it or not, but we've got a four-star general from the airport's local boy that's made really, really good. There are just eight four-star generals in the airport, and he's one of, his father has been active for years in all the civic clubs in Maristown, and his father was a good guy, and everybody here probably knows his army. But Army bunch is retiring, and I was just wondering if you all had considered naming something, you know, a bridge or whatever, anything after him?
But as we've discussed, Steve, we're, we've, there's some folks, several folks who have mentioned this, and the council is aware of General Bunce's accomplishments and, and some recognition, certainly a little permanent recognition. We just haven't decided why.
That's good. That's fair. That's, he deserved it. Of course, he done well. Not too many four-star generals come from Maristown.
That's true.
Hey, Steve, if you gave us suggestions, we'd like, we'd like to have. You can come up with suggestions.
Do what now?
If you come up with any suggestions on what to be named later on, let us know.
What about Community Center?
Steve.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make, make it clear. You are requesting that the city.
Yes, definitely. I'm asking, requesting whatever, whatever I need to do.
Okay.
That's good. I'm sure. I've talked to several people, and everybody played ball for him, you know, so, because he's, you know, he's a good kid. His daddy was a good man. He deserved it.
Did he play ball for you, Steve? Did he play ball for you?
No, he wasn't good enough to play on that. Now, he did, he did play. He come up through the recreation park and played over his high school, the New Orleans Ridge High School.
I like that lighting board. Did he play football?
No, I, I couldn't. He was around. I couldn't.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I think you've got a good show going on here right now. I'm here for the usual. Missed you a couple of weeks ago. If it's time, it's time to tape your meetings and put them on your website. And it would be nice, even if you would tape your pre-meetings, that might have been helpful tonight or in other situations. Because evidently, and I missed that meeting too, sounds like a lot of deliberation occurred over there. And, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Crewe and/or his attorney were not aware of the whole situation or what would be done at the pre-meeting. But I'm here primarily for this meeting and putting it, taping it and putting it on your website. And yes, Mr. Pedego, I'm making that request, just as Mr. Conway made his request.
I've got that impression.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing done. We'll close this portion of the hearing, or the agenda, and go to comments from mayor and council. I would want to point out that this Sunday on August the eighth at Fulton Hill Park, there'll be a celebration of Emancipation Day. This is the first time Maristown will be celebrating that on August the eighth. Begins at three o'clock in the afternoon. I think they have a full, a full agenda of items with recognitions, music, food, and a movie. So that's Sunday. This Friday, August the sixth, on the Downtown Green, will be the concert again at four o'clock on Friday afternoon.
Emancipation on Sunday is at four.
Oh, starts at four. Okay. I'll be back at it. The Emancipation Day celebration, four o'clock on Sunday. Downtown on the Green's still seven though, right? And that's seven o'clock on Friday. This will be the final one of the series of the summer. They've been well received, well attended, and we encourage everyone to attend that as well. Those are my comments. Any counsel?